will come to order. Can everyone hear me? Thumbs up, excellent. If you can't, please let me know. Legal voters of the town of Middlebury and the county of Addison, the state of Vermont, are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Middlebury Union High School Auditorium at 73 Charles Avenue in Middlebury on Monday, March 4th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. to act on Articles 1 through 5 and to discuss Articles 6 through 8, and on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m. at the Recreation Center at 154 Creek Road in Middlebury to vote by Australian ballot on Articles 6 through 8 as provided by the Middlebury Town Charter. With respect to Articles 6 and 7, the legal voters of the town of Middlebury are further notified that an informational meeting will be held on Monday, March 4th, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. at the Middlebury Union High School Auditorium for the purpose of reviewing the proposals for issuing bonds for, one, Phase 5 of the South Street Infrastructure Project, and, two, the reconstruction of Bakery Lane. Information on the bond proposals will be presented under Article 5 of the annual town meeting warning. So nervous. All motions, remarks, and questions should be addressed to myself as Madam Moderator this evening. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We have two microphone runners this evening, Fred Dunnington and Dave Silbermann. Where are you guys? There's one here and one over there. So just give them a chance to get to you. Maybe please pass the microphones down the aisle way if they need that help. After I recognize you, please state your name for the record. That's really important. And speak clearly into the microphone so we can all hear you. If you can see how close I'm getting, you're going to need to do the same. First up is Article 1, which is to act upon the reports of the town officers, and the motion for this is to accept the reports of the town officers. What's your pleasure on Article 1? Moved by Farhad and seconded in by Heather Sealy. Thank you. So first, let me introduce everyone on the stage. Your select board, select board starting over there, Andy Hooper, your vice chair, Andy Hooper, members Heather Sealy, Lindsay Fuentes-George, Farhad Khan, Dan Brown, and Isabel Gogarty. Unfortunately, Chairman Brian Carpenter can't be with us this evening. We also have town manager Kathleen Ramsey at the end there, and town clerk Karen Mott and minute taker Monica Sanchez-Wett. There's a few members of the town administration and the public who are not residents who will be speaking on different articles this evening, and they are town manager Kathleen Ramsey, library director Dana Hart, director of Public Works Planning Emily Sherrington, and fire chief David Shaw. Is there any objection to these non-Middlebury residents speaking this evening? Hearing none, they won't be allowed to speak. First, I would like to invite up Vice Chair Andy Hooper to give us a 2002 review.
I think it will be the 2023 review. Thanks very much, Madam Moderator.
Sorry.
No, it's all right. I was also working off last year's script, and I had to adjust some things as well. Thanks so much to all of you for turning out this evening. The town report contains an excellent overview of the town activities of the past year, prepared by town staff, and I'm going to give a brief summary of the highlights here, as well as what's coming up for the rest of 2024. And first, in line with that, I'd like to say I'm particularly grateful to our town employees who make the job of the select board not only easier but possible by doing such excellent work in so many different domains. I don't know everyone in town staff yet, but everyone that I do know exemplifies the very best of the Vermont characteristics of neighborly attitude and understated competence. Yeah, well deserved. Yeah. Many thanks to all of them. So looking back at 2023, despite everything that Mother Nature threw at us, our Public Works Department still advanced a number of important construction projects during the last year. They completed the penultimate stage of the South Street Reconstruction. I believe that's Stage 4 of 5, as well as laying the groundwork for Stage 5, which will be discussed this evening and voted on tomorrow. Numerous road improvement projects around our town, including Lino Lane, King's Row, Lower Foot Street, and Brookside Drive, and improvements to our wastewater pumping stations, even beyond those which were required to be repaired by the flooding last summer. Our Energy Committee comes before us frequently, and every time that they do, they tell us that electrification is the route to carbon reduction. In the past year, the Select Board advanced many electrification projects for our town, and some of them are the replacement of two municipal vehicles with plug-in hybrids, endorsing an RFP to site panels on our municipal building, determining siting priority for additional charging stations in the downtown, including rapid chargers, Level 3, I believe they are, as well as the one that I'm most excited about, signing a memorandum of understanding to investigate developing electrical generation on our downtown falls, which will not completely reduce the flow over the falls, so it still is a traction for the downtown. The issues which consumed our Tuesday evenings further demonstrate the strength of our community. We care about our civic spaces, and the turnout for the Ilesley 100 renovation expansion project design competition was monumental. The Ilesley Group came before the Select Board frequently, brought many residents with them to voice their support, and the momentum behind that project is truly awesome. The other story of Middlebury in 2023 is certainly more somber. The discussion around our increasing unhoused population and how to humanely ensure safety and deliver services to some of the most vulnerable residents in our town brought together people from diverse constituencies who all exemplified the best of our community and spirit. And lastly, far from leastly, last summer we suffered not some boring 100-year storm, but a almost biblical thousand-year storm. Our town was battered and resilient. Our previous efforts to improve the Middlebury River paid dividends, and our Public Works and Public Safety teams quickly and effectively repaired our roads and water systems. The outpouring of support and gratitude was amazing to witness. With those accomplishments behind us, there is, of course, more coming this year. We have a number of stormwater projects which will further improve our resilience to the increasing frequency of intense storms that seem to be part of living here, as well as helping to reduce the human impact on our waterways. We are looking to expand our water capacity with another water tank on Chipman Hill so we can maintain pressure for fire response, as well as provide more delicious Vermont groundwater for more housing, as well as manufacturing. We are asking residents tonight to bond for improvements to Bakery Lane and to complete the South Street rebuild, and this spring we will be asking for the authority to bond to rebuild our amazing library to serve our residents and our region for the next 100 years. As we all know, nothing is cheap. Inflation is not yet back to a comfortable level and is still a major factor in procuring all the services that our town provides. Our fiscal '25 budget, which town manager Kathleen Ramsey will discuss soon, includes increases in the cost of almost everything: healthcare, salaries, insurance rates, building materials, everything we buy is more expensive. But with a very sharp pencil, our municipal budget has been held to a 3.5% increase, in line with the overall national inflation rate, and amazing given the headwinds we're facing. Again, thank all of you for caring about and contributing to our town, and I will pass the microphone to our next presenter.
Next presenter is Selectman Dan Brown.
It's my honor tonight, well, there's a tradition in this town that annually we dedicate the annual report to a Middlebury citizen, and it's, tonight's my honor to recognize Ann Webster as a recipient of and being recognized as the person in the report was dedicated to. Is Ann here tonight?
No.
No, okay. Ann was appointed as the town clerk at the end of 2011 with the resignation of the town clerk, and then she ran for the position, and I believe ran for, was elected five different times and successfully, and so she served over 10 years as the town clerk. Did I say town manager before?
No.
Okay. I thought I had. So Ann brought her management skills that she had honed at Vermont Bicycle Company, which is VBT, and at the Co-op, which seems now to be a tradition that our town clerks come from the Co-op. So the Co-op's on alert now for that. She had many accomplishments through that time, but her biggest time as a town manager was digitizing all the land records, which was a monumental effort and took a long time to do, and has been very useful and helpful to the community, particularly during COVID. Ann had not intended, last year, she gave a notice that she was not going to seek reelection, and she gave us plenty of time in advance. However, nobody stepped up to seek out the office and be an elected official in her position. That put us in a really difficult spot, but Ann stepped up by volunteering to run for election and sitting in the position till we could appoint someone to fill her position. And sadly, we, in this community, we seem to be able to easily appoint people to elected positions more easily than we can to get people to volunteer to run for them. But in this case, it worked out well for us. She stayed on an extra three or four months and allowed a significant turnover time, which I think helped Karen a great deal. So I just like, I think the town clerk, it turns out to be probably the face of the community. If you walk into the town offices, it's the first person you see, and you know, they do a lot of, all the records, licensing, and it's a very busy office, and tonight's meetings and elections tomorrow is the culmination of a lot of work that the town clerk has to do. So I'd like to see the hands of the number of people who have either talked to Ann Webster on the phone or gone in to visit her in the office. Everybody raise a hand. Okay. So what are the rest of you doing? You're not going to the town clerk's office. But that shows you how important this job is and what a great job Ann has done, and it's been my honor to recognize her tonight. So thank you, Ann.
Next up is Selectwoman Isabel Gogarty.
Thank you so much for coming out and celebrating this really historic Vermont tradition here. I also want to highlight anyone who brought a young person with them. I want to thank you. This is a Vermont tradition, and it's really great to bring the next generation of Vermonters to this, to engage in local politics. This is the closest you get to your local elected officials, and I really thank you all for coming out, especially if you are a young person. So I have the best job tonight. I get to highlight two amazing honorees. The first one is a select person that I love dearly, and then a really great family who provided a lot to the Parks and Rec Department. So first up is Lindsay Fuentes-George. She has been on the Select Board for six years now, and she will not seek reelection tomorrow. So I've been working with Lindsay for the two years that I've been on the board, and she has done a tremendous amount of work to increase the diversity in our town, increase the accessibility in our town, and has really made this community a more inclusive community. And I'm a really glad person that I was able to work with her in this time. So I really want to thank Lindsay for all of her work, and I hope she continues on with being a really inclusive adult in our community. So thank you, Lindsay. Next, I'm going to highlight from the Spring Activity Guide. If you have a copy of this, you'll see this beautiful write-up in it, but this is the Robert E. Collins Award, and we highlight annually a family or a group of people who have done a tremendous amount of work for the Parks and Rec Department. So again, it's in the Spring Activity Guide, but I'll read it here as we speak. So Alicia and Dean Butler were selected as the recipients of the 2023 Robert E. Collins Award. This award has been presented annually since 1974 and recognizes individuals who go above and beyond in our community and exhibit extraordinary commitment and dedication to the Parks and Recreation Department. Dean and Alicia are extremely active and valued members not only in the Middlebury community, Recreation Community, but also at the town at large. Their deep love for our community is present in almost everything that they do. Alicia and Dean have dedicated their lives to improving the health and fitness of our school-aged kids, and Middlebury is certainly a better place with them here. They always contact us first about volunteering. Alicia has coached more than one team in a season for both of our soccer and basketball programs over the last six years. She puts in a lot of time behind the scenes coordinating and planning practices to make sure everything runs smoothly. Both Alicia and Dean are chairs of the Middlebury Area Little League Board, as well as helping with the behind-the-scenes organization of the programming and coaching of the teams. In addition to raising their four amazing children, Alicia acts as the Middlebury Mary Hogan Children's Parents Association MESA president. When Dean isn't answering emergency calls to help solve a situation, which almost canceled our New Year's Eve fireworks display, he serves as a returning volunteer member at the East Middlebury Prudential Committee, and in their free time, they're avid snowboarders, and they're cultivated a love for this winter sport. Now, all of their children share this same passion. They have proven themselves to be invaluable members of our department, and we are so honored to present this award to them, and they live in East Middlebury with their children. So thank you all so much. Thank you again, Ann. If you could bring a young person with you when you vote tomorrow, that would be super awesome. Have a great evening, you guys.
Thanks, Isabel. Next up, we hear from Select Board member Farhad Khan. Farhad wanted me to make a joke, but I couldn't think of anything right now. Go ahead, Farhad.
Hello, everyone. Madam Moderator. Thank you for doing that.
Sir.
I have a couple of recognitions, a couple of congratulations, and a couple of memoriam s to do. The first one is for Chief Tom Hanley. Tom Hanley began his career as the chief of Middlebury Police Department in 1991. I know that year because that's the year I came from India, so that's been a while now. The town has seen the department grow and thrive under his leadership. Tom has also served as the Emergency Management Director for the town of Middlebury, and because of his efforts in keeping the public informed during the COVID pandemic of 2020, he received the state's Vermont Emergency Manager of the Year Award for 2021, and the town of Middlebury dedicated that 2021 town report to him. Tom will now enjoy a well-earned retirement, having turned over the reins to Middlebury's new chief of police, Officer Jason Covey. If you want to see the Tom's picture, it's in the town's report today. The next one is for Dustin Hunt. Dustin Hunt began with the Middlebury Parks and Rec Department in 2009 in a part-time position doing maintenance and coaching, but he was promoted to program coordinator in 2014 and became the superintendent of Parks and Rec in 2018. Hunt accepted a new position as dean of climate and culture at Middlebury Union Middle School at the end of August, and we wish him well in his new career. Wastewater Superintendent Bob Belz was selected as 2023 Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator of the Year Award from the United States Environmental Protection Agency Regional One Office. Bob was nominated for the award by Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. Congratulations, Bob. Congratulations are also in order to the town of Middlebury and Corey Crane for winning the roadside garden award from the Middlebury Garden Club for the downtown flowers and the landscaping in the roundabout during the summer of 2023. I have a couple of memoriams here. It was with great sadness that the town said goodbye to Jeff Warden, who passed away on September 15, 2023, following a long illness. Jeff worked for the town of Middlebury Highway Department for 12 years. Victor Nuovo, I think many of you know that he served on the Select Board with us for quite a few years. He passed away a few months ago, and a few months prior to that, he lost his beautiful wife, Betty Nuovo. She served briefly on the Select Board a while back, and she also used to be a state legislator. As I think about Victor, I can see him sitting at the table with the rest of the Select Board, a place where he has sat for so many years as a distinguished member of the board. To him, town meeting was the embodiment of democracy, where the citizens and those who they elected came together to discuss the local issues that impacted each of us. Victor Nuovo served the town of Middlebury with distinction as a member of the Select Board from March 2006 to January 2014, and again from March 2016 until November 2020. During his tenure on the Select Board, Victor served on many town committees, including personal committee, town school committee, town offices recreation center building committee, and the library building committee, and represented the Select Board on the Addison County Transit Resource Commission and the Middlebury Area Land Trust. Victor played a role in several major projects within the town, such as the construction of the Cross Street Bridge, the new town offices, and the rec center, and the replacement of the railroad bridges on the Main Street and Merchant's Row. It is quite possible that many of these projects would not have happened without the knowledge, dedication, and guidance that Victor possessed. He was a true gentleman who always maintained an attitude of professionalism and courtesy and genuine caring for the concerns of citizens and the town. Victor's love of knowledge and commitment to the truth has been a solid foundation and a guiding light for many of the Select Board's discussions about important community issues, and we thank him for the extraordinary dedication and outstanding service to the Middlebury community. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion for Article 1? If not, all in favor of accepting the reports of the town officers, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the reports have been accepted. Article 2, shall the voters of the town of Middlebury vote to adopt the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2025, which is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $13,609,827, with a portion thereof in the amount of $8 million? Did I say 13 million the first time? Okay. It sounded really good in my living room. So $8,753,310 to be raised by taxes and $1,040,700 to be allocated from the annual local options tax receipts in excess of debt and maintenance requirements of the Cross Street Bridge to offset spending for capital improvements. What's your pleasure regarding Article 2?
So moved.
So moved by Andy Hooper. Is there a second? Second by Isabel Gogarty. I'm going to call Kathleen Ramsey. She's already at the microphone, because she's good.
Evening, everyone. After careful and thorough deliberation, the Select Board adopted FY '25 budget, requiring an increase in the estimated tax rate from $0.8648 to $0.8947, an increase of $0.299 or 3.5% if Article 3 is approved. Here's taking a look, here's taking a look at the breakdown of that with Article 3 included. The proposed budget reflects both inflationary pressures and the town's continued commitment to a robust capital improvement plan and an efficient vehicle and equipment maintenance and replacement plan while preserving the current level of town services. The proposed FY '25 budget and other articles presented for voter consideration at this year's town meeting incorporate input the board has received over the years. Draw on reserves to minimize increases in the tax rate. Use local option tax revenue in excess of what is needed for Cross Street Bridge fund debt to fund infrastructure improvement projects. And use the Cross Street Bridge Fund reserve to fund capital improvements, reduce amounts borrowed and/or interest expense, and leverage grant and other funding. Major drivers for our budget include capital improvement spending, $257,066, employee wages and benefits of $191,161. The basis for that increase is nearly $6 million, so that is not a large increase, keeping that in mind. Highway gravel road improvements, $70,000. This was previously carried in the capital fund, but it is more of a maintenance item, so we transferred it to the operating budget this year, and that is reflected in the Public Works budget. Equipment maintenance and purchases, up $34,016. Middlebury Regional EMS, $34,016, and property and casualty insurance, $21,750. To offset these major drivers, we have, we're predicting a general fund increase in interest of $150,000. Local option tax revenue increased $200,000. Transfers from the Water and Wastewater Fund of $54,239. The addition of the police dispatch contract with the Addison County Sheriff's Department of $24,000. And the board is proposing the transfer of $133,450 from the Cross Street Bridge Fund to pay for the adaptive reuse debt. So taking a look at where our revenue comes from to support our budget, the lion's share is from property tax, but we also have school and interfund transfers, charges for services, local option tax, and gifts and payments from the college. Our budget reflects the use of $434,462 from last year's surplus. This is what your tax dollar buys. We have the police department at $2.2 million, Public Works at $2.1 million, also $884,000 for the library department, and $593,000 for the recreation department. A big amount of your, a large amount of your budget also goes to capital improvement spending, about 1.5%, $1.9 million, the large amount of that coming as Public Works expenditures. So I thought we would drill down a little bit on the Public Works expenditures, which include, the budget overall includes funding for road, sidewalks, stormwater, parks, and recreation infrastructure, and Public Works, police, fire, recreation, library, and town office buildings, equipment, and technology, with over 70% of funding allocated for Public Works projects. for Public Works projects. So the lion's share of that is allocated for road construction at $819,000, sidewalks and bike ped projects, $280,000, stormwater projects, $140,000, which leverages a good deal of grant funding, facilities, $65,000, project planning and other at $46,500. Since we bumped the, our projection on the local option tax quite a bit this year, I wanted to give you a little bit of a history of our last five years, five or six years, in what our receipts have been. In the last fiscal year was $1.3 million, and that's what we have included in our budget for this year. The local option tax is used to pay the Cross Street Bridge Fund debt in combination with $600,000 as a gift from Middlebury College. So the Cross Street Bridge Fund debt is $859,300 this year. Our college gift, $600,000, leaving the amount funded by the general fund at $259,300. So our local option tax revenue, less the debt, you come up with the $1,040,700, which is the amount reflected in the article as read by the moderator. Always an area of interest is the amount remaining in the Cross Street Bridge Fund, just over $2 million. We are proposing, as mentioned before, the, using $133,450 from the, for the PD debt service, and the remaining balance will be about 1.9 million. This includes all of the allocations the town meeting has made previously. The Select Board each year reviews a couple of agencies, social service agencies. This year was the Charter House and Tri Valley Transit. The Charter House did not request an increase this year, but given the spotlight on homelessness in our community, the Select Board wanted to meet with the Charter House again. The Charter House, for those that don't know, their mission is to provide shelter for the homeless, nutritious meals for the hungry, and the social service support that people need to progress toward better health and stable housing. The Charter House is open all day, every day. They work in close partnership with other agencies, including housing managers, the Middlebury Police Department, the Turning Point Center, and the Counseling Services of Addison County, as well as the Ilesley Library and Tri Valley Transit. Charter House request for funding for FY25 is $6,500, the same as the last three years. Oh, sorry about that. Secondly, Tri Valley Transit connects people and places of Addison, Orange, northern Windsor Counties of Vermont with our network of community transportation alternatives. Tri Valley Transit provided 180,794 rides in fiscal year 2023, and of those, 62,851 originated at Middlebury. 80% of their funding is from federal grants, requiring a 20% local match. Less than 5% of their funding comes from municipal appropriations. They've requested $30,178, an increase of $4,080 over their FY24 funding request. Looking ahead, while the Select Board has presented a budget requiring only a modest increase in the property tax again this year, keep in mind that increases in the following expenses, employee wages and benefits, infrastructure project improvements, replacement of vehicles and equipment and unfunded mandates, and continued uncertainty about inflation and the economy and the future of state and federal funding, as well as dwindling reserves and the fund balance, will put significant pressure upward, upward pressure on budgets in FY25 and beyond. Happy to review. Any questions you may have about the detailed budget presented? Our department heads are available to answer any questions you may have. Capital improvements. With Director of Public Works Planning, Emily Sherrington, Public Safety, our Police Chief, Jason Covey, and Fire Chief David Shaw, Libraries, Library Director Dana Hart, Parks and Recreation, Superintendent Scott Born, and General Government Revenues, I will be fielding those questions.
Questions on Article Two? Blue shirt.
Could you remind us, what was the outcome of the discussions with the EMT? That slide didn't, wasn't up there very long. It was some increase. They had asked for a multi-year funding increase, hadn't they? If you could review what that was and what resulted.
They, as, they said that there are likely more increases coming. They met with the Select Board at least once, twice, once in September and once in January to talk about the increase of $34,016 this year. The Select Board scrutinized their budget and their request, and that was for one year. There may be more increases coming, but they haven't been specified yet, and that increase is incorporated in the budget.
Dave, there's a hand right there in the middle.
Maya Zimmerman. I was wondering, does the college gift for the Cross Street Bridge expire, and when would that happen?
So that is a 30-year bond, and the college pays, will pay that $600,000 until 2040.
Fred, I saw a hand in the back row, and then there's another one right next to it.
Hi, Dick Turk. I've got actually two questions. One is the college donations, not talking about the Cross Street Bridge, but the other college donations, are they committed by the college, or is that just anticipated?
Yes. We have a 20-year agreement with the college that's based on two components. One is the performance of $1 million invested. We get the interest off that, and we also get, it started with a payment of $150,000 a year, and increases each year with the amount that the tax rate increases. So the total payment that we're getting from the college at this time is around $325,000 in FY24 for that component of it. They also pay a portion of our Town Office and Recreation Department bond, which is about $250,000.
Thank you. My other question is, the issues we've got now with the water lines, with the, all the breaks in the water lines and the age of the water line, is that, what's in the budget this year for repair of that? Because I don't see it in there.
Right, so the Select Board will be taking up the issue of the water and sewer fund budgets this spring, and you can anticipate that there will be a large focus on capital improvements in those budgets. Those are approved separately at the Select Board's meetings.
Thank you.
Saw a hand right behind Dick. No, changed your mind? Anybody else? Hand over here.
First, I want to say how grateful I am with the setup this year, and how clear you all are, and, and how beautifully visible the slides are. Thank you for the effort to present so clearly to us tonight. And I'm Laura Assermelee, and, and I, I just want to reflect back on the water pipe question. When you showed the pie chart of where the money goes, you see roads, you see stormwater, you don't see water pipes. Is that, could you help us explain where that is reflected in the capital improvement pie chart?
Okay, so that is only general fund expenditures. The water and sewer funds are accounted for and presented separately.
Okay.
So they are not included in the general fund.
So when we're, when we're looking at the pie chart that reflects the budget for the different departments, it would be kind of absorbed in that pie chart? Is that what you're saying?
Public Works does not include water and sewer. Those budgets are separate. They are not approved at town meeting. The Select Board, as water and sewer commissioners, approves those budgets.
Okay, all right, well, okay, thank you. And then regarding the MREM's budget, so you, you were saying that they're not in the budget this year because they were a one-time expense.
They are included in the budget this year as requested.
And we can't see it in the...
Okay, they are not in the public safety, the public organizations, the health and safety. I'll get you a line item.
It's listed as 544, but it's zero there, and so maybe they've been moved to another line.
Hold on, I'm just looking for that. So I put them in with public safety.
Okay, so they're in the public safety department.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So we'll find it there. All right, I think. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Line 485 is what was said. Any other questions or discussion on Article Two? Oh, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Victoria Dwin. I have a couple of different, questions for different areas. The gravel roads, I saw in the capital improvements that paving gravel roads has been postponed for your, I'm wondering what the gravel road improvements this budget year, and then what the plan is for paving.
Emily. Can you get the microphone back to behind you there, Dave? Emily's right behind you. Thank you.
Tried to think off the top of my head. For paving, we are proposing to do east...
For gravel roads?
Do you just want gravel roads? So we aren't proposing to pave any gravel roads in this cycle. That's why we removed it from the budget.
Wait a minute, wait for the microphone, please, so everyone can hear. Thank you.
Does it plan to pave next year? It said it was postponed one year.
It, it would be up for conversation in the fall of next year.
So there's no firm plans for paving gravel roads at this point?
Correct.
How many questions do you have, Sue? Victoria, sorry.
I just was wondering, the $40,000 increase in payment of lieu of taxes, is that a new contribution, or is it expanding on one we already get?
That is reflective of what our actual receipts are in this year, and then what the increase in the tax rate will be and projected investment revenue.
Okay. And one, just one more question. Given the huge increase in use and the rapidly deteriorating condition of our pickleball courts, and I saw $20,000 for court resurfacing, is that what that's for, or is that something else?
Is Scott Born here? He's our recreation person. I'm sorry, I don't know the particulars of that.
I believe it's incorporated into that.
I mean, we've been waiting three years for it to happen, I hope.
Yes, we, we've heard that loudly and clearly.
Any other questions or discussion on Article Two? I'm looking for hands. Are you ready for the question? Okay. The motion is on adopting Article Two as warned. In favor of adopting Article Two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Two has been adopted. Thank you. Moving on to Article Three. Shall the voters of the Town of Middlebury vote pursuant to 24 Vermont State Statutes 2408A to authorize the Select Board to apply up to $133,450 from the Cross Street Bridge Reserve Fund to offset PD adaptive reuse building debt service expense? What's your pleasure regarding Article Three? So moved, what's your name, please? Thank you, Nick. Is there a second? Farhad Khan, second. I'm going to call up Lindsay Fuentes George, who's already at the microphone again. They're sneaking up on me. Go ahead.
Hi, neighbors. To offset the FY25 budget increase and reduce the impact on the tax rate, under Article Three of the town meeting warning, the Select Board has proposed applying $133,450 from the Cross Street Bridge Reserve Fund to cover the debt service payment on the PD adaptive reuse bond, as contemplated when the bond vote was presented to voters in 2020. The planned use of Cross Street Bridge Reserve Funds allowed the town to bond for the project for seven years rather than 20 years. The shorter seven-year term for the bond will save the town an estimated $179,000 in interest expense versus the 20-year bond. If approved, the transfer for the Cross Street Bridge Reserve Fund will shave 1.35 cents off the tax rate estimated for FY25. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions on Article Three? See a hand? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Ira Schiffer. Could you please explain what the Cross Street Bridge Reserve Fund is, and how a limit is determined as to how much can be taken from it without preserving it for whatever it was initially intended to do?
Sure. The Cross Street Bridge Reserve Fund is a reserve fund that will pay for maintenance on the Cross Street Bridge should repairs become necessary, which they will at some point. And I know the, the amount that we keep in reserve is, is a common topic for us, but I will let Kathleen tell you more of the particulars for how we're sure we are covered.
So the Select Board asked that very question. The Cross Street Bridge Fund started when the town adopted the local option tax. At the time when the local option tax was adopted, it was projected that it would be $650,000 a year, which would cover the town share of the Cross Street Bridge Fund. Since then, it's grown up to $1.3 million, and what we don't use for the, for capital improvements or for the debt service on the Cross Street Bridge Fund goes into the reserve fund. Right now, that fund is a projected $2 million, and I looked at the debt, the maintenance schedule for the bridge, and the next maintenance round is projected for 2030, and that, the estimated cost of those repairs were $312,000 in 2017. So I tripled that, and looking at about, what, $900,000, something like that. So the $2 million will more than cover that, but the Board wants to keep a close eye on
We have a hand over here?
Thank you, Fred. Ted Shai. You've used the phrase PD adaptive reuse project a couple times, and I would love it if you could explain what that is. and I would love it if you could explain what that is.
Sorry about that. Several years ago, I think it was 2020, the voters approved a bond for rehabbing the old wastewater treatment facility that's at the police station for use for storage and a fitness center for the police department. And that is what this debt service is for.
Question in the back? Excellent. Question answered. Any others? Are you ready for the question? The motion is on adopting Article Three as warned. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The article has been adopted, thank you. Article Four. Shall the voters of the town of Middlebury vote to collect taxes on real property for fiscal year 2024-25 in two equal installments due in the treasurer's office on the 15th day of November 2024 and on the 14th day of March 2025? What's your pleasure regarding Article Four? So moved Heather Sealy, is there a second? Farhad again, thank you. I'm going to invite Andy Hooper, he's already there. I should got to say, stop the inviting part. Go for it, Andy.
Very good, thank you, madame moderator. I got to present this last year, my first time up here, which was the first time that we went from three to two tax payments. The reason for this is primarily the second bullet up there. By delaying the first tax payment, it allows us time to figure out what the correct homestead tax rate for the education, statewide education property tax is so that we send correct property tax bills and we don't have issues with collections because of alterations which are made on the state formula. I, I asked today at the finance department how many people have taken advantage of the town's availability of structuring payments into more, more payments across the year so that they don't get hit with half of their property tax being due on two dates. Was told that there are about a dozen people in town who are currently doing that. Any questions?
Any questions or discussion on Article Four? Question in the front here?
Chris Deal. I didn't know that was an option. And can't the schedule just be shifted to allow for three payments?
My understanding is that because the town payments are not even throughout the year, that when the, when the town requires property tax to become, to come in is not balanced with the, with the calendar. And that's why these dates are chosen.
How do we find out about the payments over time?
I will defer.
So what, so you're talking about the three payments. So we, our three payments used to be August 15th, November 15th, and March 15th. We went to two payments last year because that August payment was really problematic in getting all of the information we needed on the homestead property tax information from the state. And so we sent out many corrected invoices as those, as that information came in through the fall. So that is why we shifted to November. Like I, like I often say, we'll gladly take your money whenever you want to give it to us.
But what about the 12 people? How do we do that?
It's, we arrange, some of them tell us, we're going to give you so much a month. Or some of them just send us money and put it, we put it towards our account.
Any other questions or discussion on Article Four? Are you ready for the question? The motion is on adopting Article Four as warned. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, Article Four is adopted. We move on to Article Five, which is to transact other business proper to be done, which means we are not voting on the floor anymore, but we are going to be discussing the articles that are coming up for voting tomorrow at the recreation center. Plus, there's going to be some good information coming about the library and other information, so don't go anywhere. Coming up first is Select Woman Heather Sealy, who's going to be discussing Articles Six and Seven. You can go now. You were supposed to be up there, Heather, come on.
I wanted to make sure I was following the rules.
You were very good, very compliant.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see you all here tonight. I have the pleasure of talking with you about the bond votes that you will be voting on tomorrow by Australian ballot. The first of which, and I just want to remind everyone, a lot of the reason we do these bond votes is it helps us leverage additional funding to help pay for these projects. So I'll talk about that a little bit in detail, but just a reminder that when you're voting on these, you're really giving us your community support for the project. It doesn't necessarily mean that we will be asking you to pay 100%. And a good example of that was the, if you were here last year, we talked a lot about the water storage tank on Chipman Hill. And we did get a successful bond vote on that. We unfortunately were not successful yet in acquiring or being granted enough funding to help offset the cost of that. So we did not do that project as anticipated yet because we haven't been able to secure the funding for it. So we are very responsible in what we do with your approval. Just because you say yes does not necessarily mean the project's going to go forward. We want to make sure that we have the funding in place. And a lot of times, the first step in that process is getting your approval by bond vote. So let's talk about South Street Phase Five. This is, the town has secured 1.1, almost 1.2 million dollars in funding for the project, 664,000 as a grant through ARPA, and $498,200 as a 2% low-interest 20-year loan through SRF, which is the state revolving, state revolving fund? The repayment on that is about 51,000 annually. The state revolving loan fund, SRF, does require this bond vote that I just spoke of as public support for the project. I don't know. I think I mixed up my slides, what's next? Apologies. State and federal funded grant and loan forgiveness programs require the community's support for eligibility, which we just talked about. Community support is demonstrated through that bond vote and it helps leverage state and federal funds. And always our goal is to help reduce the cost to our residents. Oh, yes, thank you. Let's not skip the really pretty slide, I apologize. In all my practicing, I have mixed up my papers. The project description on the, the final phase, Phase Five of the South Street project includes wastewater, stormwater, and traffic calming improvements. This also helps limit wastewater rate increases. The anticipated construction cost is 1.5 million. That is an estimate at this point. We do anticipate putting this project out to bid in the fall of 2024, early, late fall 2024, early winter 2025. And construction would be estimated, again, pending funding and everything, in 2025. Can I answer any questions for you?
Oh, there's a hand over here?
David had his hand up as well, sorry.
Sorry, I couldn't see you.
I just wanted to ask, what is the traffic calming improvements?
And what's your name for the record, please?
Vivian Valtrey Burgess.
Say that again?
Vivian Valtrey Burgess.
Thank you.
It's a lot of names.
It's a good one. A good example of some traffic calming proposals are what's shown in the bottom part of this, of the slide that's up here. That includes bump outs. And if you're familiar with driving to the, along Merchants Row, the improvements we made along Merchants Row include some of these traffic calming measures. One method of traffic calming is to narrow the roadway and you can accomplish that by putting some bump outs where the crosswalks are to make the distance that pedestrians are traveling across the roadway shorter. And some of this is still in design, so not 100% designed yet. But that, that is one proposed traffic calming for that area.
And Dave, you wanted to ask a question, go ahead.
Thank you, Dave Silverman, resident of South Street. So I was a little surprised to hear that this work isn't being done until 2025. The road is a bit of a mess from the 2023 work. Are there plans to make it a little bit less of a mess before 2025? I mean, like, there's no curbs, it's a, it, there's mud everywhere, it's a real mess.
So Emily can add to this, but the current Phase Four project, which included the waterline work which needed to be done before the wastewater and stormwater can be done, did not get completed as anticipated this year because of several factors. And will, yeah, will be completed in May through summer, hopefully. And we wanted to give residents a little bit of space before we then did some more construction. And I think there is hope after they've completed this water project that the road will be a little bit better before it's finally done.
That's all very true.
Emily said that's all very true.
We did not want to release this project without knowing how long the current waterline improvements were going to take because this could potentially be a different contractor and then you're trying to coordinate two packages at the same time and it would make an absolute nightmare. But the curbing and sidewalk improvements are part of the current contract. So the, some of that will be improved in this coming cycle.
Have a hand up in the middle here?
Linda Schiffer. My question is, does this encompass the entire length of South Street? Can we go back to the? So this may be a little difficult to see, but. Sorry, I can't figure this part out. The red thing? Yep. From, so we're talking about, so from here north towards the, uh, south, sorry. This direction towards the hospital. The, most of that work has already been done in prior phases. So we're in Phase Four now. So we're looking at, what's this road right here? Chipman? All of this green, I believe, no, that's a sewer line, sorry. Waterline is blue. So this is what's currently been, is currently in process. And then Phase Five is the green and the purple, purple being stormwater, green being sewer lines. So, so part of the issue on South Street is that the stormwater and the sewer lines are together and they shouldn't be. And so the ultimate final goal will be brand-new water lines, brand-new sewer, brand-new stormwater, and the stormwater and the sewer will be separated.
Thank you.
I see a hand over here? Back behind, there you go, Laura.
Laura Assermeley. So the Public Health and Safety Committee and Middlebury Safe Roots and the Walk Bike Council all hear the same thing, which is that we need to calm traffic, not just on South Street, but many streets. So of course, we're excited whenever we see traffic calming measures planned for our roads. And, and we need to consider the cyclists that are going over those bump outs too. So yes, we love bump outs. And the bump outs need to be designed in a way that they're not an obstruction for cyclists. And we have an increasing number of bike commuters that need to have road design that works for them as well. And we know that there are a lot of other places and we, we're working toward that. And we know that good shoulder design and that what we call road diets, which is what you're talking about with bump outs on South Street, are a good direction in which to move. So we're grateful for that. And I just wanted to note that with regard to cyclists' needs as well. Thank you.
Any other questions for Heather? I see a hand.
Yep, right here.
Ellen Cronin, also a South Street resident. I just wanted to clarify that Phase Four is incomplete. Phase Four is planned for this year and Phase Five is planned for 2025.
So Phase Four is actually in process. That was started in 2023 and will wrap up in 2024. And then, yes, Phase Five is estimated to happen in 2025.
And with regard to the mud and other status of the road at this time, I'm wondering whether any of the Phase Four work that has been done will be revisited in terms of finish work as there was planting done in November?
Do you want to help, Emily?
So as I, with that, I'm just, I'm wondering if that's, if that's going to be included in finish of Phase Four or if the areas that have already been worked on are going to be as is until 2025? Areas were temporarily stabilized just to get us through the winter season, but they'll be permanently stabilized with this spring effort. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Oh, I see a hand all the way in the back.
Thanks to David and Fred for running microphones around.
That's really nice.
I'm Anne Christie. I'm in, live in East Middlebury where we have been exploring traffic calming measures for a few years. So I would love to hear if you're able to speak to other measures you're taking along South Street besides the bump outs.
So I don't know what percent plan, the design plans are at at this point. Emily could, I, I don't, the plan, the design for this particular phase of the project are not complete yet. We don't have final plans. What percentage would you say, Emily, that we're?
Dave, can you bring the microphone back?
Oh.
Thanks. If anyone wants to volunteer in the future for microphone runner, it's very appreciated.
Get your steps in. I'd say we're at about 75% plan. We, because of the funding source, we have to go backwards a little bit with the planning to make sure that the state approves all of the steps that we've gone through to date. But because this project has been going on for over 10 years, the entire project was designed originally and then it's been broken out for these different phases over time. So the traffic calming component of it is one of the newer pieces of it. And some of the things that we're looking at, we do have to keep in consideration that it's the primary or the only access to the hospital. And there is parking along one side of the roadways, which somewhat complicates bike lanes. But we're looking at narrowing the lanes slightly and then increasing the fog line on the west side of the road to make a better bike lane on that side. And then the bump out would potentially be on the east side, which has parallel parking already. So it wouldn't impact the bike lane, but it would still neck down the crossing for pedestrians. And then the other component is that the bump outs, if elevations allow, could potentially be used for stormwater treatment as a biofiltration location.
So Anne, just to comment on your. So Anne, just to comment on your desire to calm traffic on Route 125, just a reminder that that is a state highway and not a town road. So that does make it, make the process different.
Any other questions for Heather? See a hand here in the front? No? Right here.
Hi, my name is Jamie Hand. My question is?
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Jamie Hand.
Thank you.
And my question is, how much of the rest of the town has the combined sewer, stormwater system? And are there plans to tackle and separate those throughout town?
This isn't a true combined sewer system. It's, it's more of an infiltration issue into the sewer. So because of the lines that are in place there in rain events or high-water events, we're getting a lot of infiltration, which sort of acts similarly as a combined sewer. And so the ARPA CSO grant that we got for $664,000 is sort of out of that CSO funding. But it's, it's slightly different nuance than the combined system. In the town, I, I don't know the total, I forget the total off the top of my head, but we've sort of been picking away at them over the years. So they're really, it's really more infiltration in locations than it is true CSOs that we're dealing with.
CSO is combined sewer overspill.
Does that answer your question, Jamie?
I think so. Though I guess, are there, are there a number of other areas that have the issue that you're describing with water infiltration into the sewer system?
Yeah, there are some other areas. One of the areas, is that my mic? On, like, Gorham Lane, we think some of those sewer lines have potential infiltration in that neighborhood. There's where the new development is being proposed on Seminary Street Extension. There's a long run of wastewater line there. That one of the components of that development to give them a wastewater allocation, we're requiring that that sewer line be lined, which is a common method of solving this problem. So all of the manholes in the line itself will be lined, and that will sort of solve the infiltration issues there.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I just don't know who's giving all the answers over there. Who, who she is?
That, that is Emily Sherrington. She is our Director of Public Works Planning.
And what's your name for the record, please?
Debbie Ramsdale.
Thank you.
Emily replaced Dan Warner in our Public Works Department. So Emily, stand up and wave to everybody, please.
Yay, for Emily! Any other questions? Looks like you can move on, Heather.
Good.
What's six?
Article seven.
Oh, did you, oh, you already did that, sorry. You were going to do Bakery Lane. There we go.
Yep.
Lane, not land.
So again, same, same, the same spiel about bond votes and funding. As you can see on the slide behind me, there is the proposed project area. This project includes wastewater, stormwater, and highway improvements. Again, goals to limit water and wastewater rate increases. We have an, did I skip? Okay. Anticipated construction costs of $1.2 million. This particular project is currently estimated to be bid in the fall of 2025 and construct in 2026. This is estimated. There is a lot of time and work still to do on this project. Funding for this project, $944,871 through the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, and $350,129 would be the remaining balance coming from the water, wastewater, highway, and capital funds. The work involved in this effort is a wastewater pump station upgrade, waterline replacement, sewer line replacement, stormwater improvements, and paving improvements. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the SRF program, requires a bond vote to show public support. Are you tired of me saying that yet? The town has secured the $944,871 in funding for the project, which is a 2% low-interest, 20-year loan, repayment of approximately $80,000 a year, and a lower interest rate than a regular bond vote, bond note, excuse me. In conclusion, state and federally funded grant and loan forgiveness programs require community support for eligibility. Community support is demonstrated through a bond vote. Positive vote will leverage state and federal funds, and our goal is to reduce the cost to residents. And I'm happy to answer more questions.
See a hand in the back? Dave's on it.
Anne Christie, I'm wondering how the Bakery Lane improvements take into account potential flooding from the river?
Poor Dave. Emily going to take that?
I think, I think Emily is saying they don't.
These improvements aren't really in the flood zone area of the, I mean, it's not along the banks of the river. It's, it's all under the roadway, existing roadway surface.
Does that answer your question, Anne?
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, there's a hand here. Fred? In the back. Thank you.
William Beederman, I live on South Street Extension. William Beederman, I live on South Street Extension. And the question I have, as we're laying out all this future work being done on South Street, and also Bakery Lane, is it possible that you're going to be putting the gravel and all the materials that get hauled up and down South Street every day? Is that going to be somewhere else in town? Maybe out on the end of Exchange Street? The traffic is pretty amazing.
Are you referring to the staging area for the South Street project?
Yes, I am.
And I would anticipate that that would continue through Phase Five? For South Street, but not for Bakery Lane?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Up here in the front?
I was just curious how, how, you know, I'm sure there's other roadways that have similar issues. I'm curious how, what the process is. How does, how does this project rise to the top to be funded this year as opposed to projects elsewhere?
And can you say your name for the record again?
Jamie Hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is really more of an infrastructure improvement project than a roadway project, although the road is in horrible condition as well. But the pump station that's on Bakery Lane serves a number of the restaurants in that area, and so it gets a really high grease load, which greatly impacts one of our pump stations. And it's one of the pump stations that we have a lot of infiltration issues coming into. South Street also goes to the same pump station. So this upgrade is more to improve, make improvements at that pump station, which will benefit those restaurants and those communities in there. And then the roadway is just the final benefit of it all. Right now, the way, well, I wouldn't say that there's really a crown on the road right now. It's just a series of potholes. But the idea is that we'll actually be designing a reverse crown so that it'll grab the flow and bring it away from the buildings as opposed to pitching it towards, I know that the buildings on the riverside of the roadway take a brunt of any stormwater flow on that hillside.
See a hand here in the middle?
Kristy Lynn. I'm just curious if there is, if there are plans to change the pedestrian accessibility down Bakery Lane with this project and along the, the lower parking lot, and what that looks like, so.
We have sort of played around with that, but we don't have anything. I think originally, this was in the town plan, was it 2017? I think that it got put out. Okay, thanks, Jen. And that, in that, it was proposed as more of a pedestrian, I forget what it was called. Jen?
Can we get her a microphone?
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
And can you say the master plan again, too, please?
It's in the 2020 Downtown Master Plan. What was your question, then?
Do you, do you, it was called like Green Pathways or something?
Oh, yeah, we looked at Green Alley's.
Green Alley's, okay, thank you. So we couldn't quite incorporate that concept into it because there are, they have very staggered and high number of deliveries to these businesses. So we have to keep vehicle access able to flow through there. And I think that the major proposals, I think we could be creative with striping it potentially to add, you know, more of a delineated area for pedestrians. But I, that might be the best we can do because there is also parking that we have to be able to, so we can't really do a raised curb or an official sidewalk.
Hey, Emily, I'm going to ask a favor for you to come up here. You're like a voice from the floor. If you can rise and come over here, that would be appreciated. And I saw a hand in the back here. Thank you. Sorry.
Hi, Alan Shashock. I'm wondering if the Bakery Lane project has, is being planned for the potential of the rebirth of the EDI project, which was discussed several years ago, and if that ever comes back, if there is consideration for that? Thanks.
It is not incorporated at this time.
I see a hand in the back there?
Oh, he's not allowed to answer.
Your side.
He's not allowed to ask any questions.
Nick Arndt, I was actually going to ask this question earlier, but I want to wait till Dave walked down the front so he could run back here. You're welcome, Dave. Actually, it serves as a follow-through to Alan's. Is this scalable? Because the EDI project's been off and on in discussion, and if we think about the life expectancy of this project, it's conceivable, whether it's 10, 25, 30 years, that it may happen. It could happen. So is this scalable to the point where it could adapt to that next project? Are we preparing for the potential for that?
I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I, I, isn't the EDI project further down?
It would actually be really behind the library, that parking lot, that whole area. So it encompasses a large swath of that region. Yeah, exactly what I was showing.
So I think a, a lot of that area, if I'm picturing the mapping correctly, I think it only picks up a few of the manholes from over there. I think that flow actually goes a different direction.
Okay, thanks, Emily.
Fred?
I think there's another slide with a better picture of the plans, if that's useful.
Did I see another hand up? Oh, over here. Thank you.
Claire Tubbs? I was wondering if you could, Emily, just describe the stormwater improvement techniques a little bit more?
So with the funding opportunity, we have to go backwards a little bit in design on this one, too. We're at the 90% phase with this project right now. But there is a potential to leverage more funding from the state if we incorporate stormwater. It would probably be a bioretention, something of that nature, down at the bottom of the hill.
Anybody else? I see a hand in the front here.
Kristielle. Is there being thought, being put into taking care of the businesses down there? It's so narrow, I could see any work shutting down a business for a given time.
Yes, we have met with the businesses down there already, and we need to meet with them again. It's ongoing discussion on how we will address the construction in that area. But yes, we are working with them and, and trying to make it work for everyone.
People are stretching, and I can't tell if you have your hand up or not. Anyone else? All right. Oh, one more?
I understood from an earlier comment that there was concern for deliveries that have to be made to the businesses in that area. And I wonder how you structure the priorities wherein those deliveries fit along with pedestrian and bike traffic and other considerations?
And your name for the record, please?
My name is John Cook.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure exactly what, what you're asking. Like, are you saying during the construction time or after construction's completed? Like, how are we going to balance pedestrian deliveries during construction?
Actually, I'm talking about both.
Okay.
It seems to me that increasing bike and pedestrian traffic generally in Middlebury would be a very high priority. But I don't hear much discussion of that in this specific case or otherwise. So I wonder, when this was being considered, was pedestrian and bike traffic thought about, talked about at all?
Yes, it was, and it has been, and it continues to be a part of the planning and discussion. Like Emily just mentioned, the, the amount of space that we have there creates big challenges for accommodating every user. There's also parking as you're heading down the hill towards Haymaker. There is parking for apartment buildings. So it's difficult, as Emily said, to build any kind of raised sidewalk or curb there because people need to be able to access that parking. Yes, we are trying to accommodate all users in a very small, tight space.
So in terms of construction, one of the considerations that we're, we need to discuss further with the businesses is shutting down the road completely because that would allow us to do the construction most efficiently. Everything's essentially five foot deep. So if we can shut down the entire roadway, take off two foot of material off the top of it, and then we'd be able to get in there and get out much more efficiently and be able to rebuild back better. It would be like a four-week disruption as opposed to a three-month disruption trying to juggle allowing access to pedestrians and deliveries while we're doing construction. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I think moving forward, we'll try to be creative with line striping to accommodate users such as pedestrians and bicyclists going down the hill.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thanks for coming up, Emily. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Big thank you to Emily for filling all the gaps. And just quickly, a reminder to come out and vote tomorrow. We appreciate your time and effort, and thank you for all the great questions.
So this is a time where we usually traditionally allow candidates who are running for office to say a few words. And as they nervously look around, there's also going to be some information from the Ilzy Project team coming up and some words from Laura Assermelee. So there's still more to the meeting. Any candidates who would like to speak? I'm sorry, Kurt? They can speak from the microphones or they can come up. It's up to them. It's, it's not a huge thing. There are, there may be some candidates who are not Middlebury residents who are also running for local office. Is there any objection to anyone from there speaking this evening? Hearing none? Candidates who are not residents are allowed to speak as well. So Fred, looks like he's going first.
As it happens, I have a microphone. I'm running for select board, looking to move up from election worker. I recognize many of you from my working with the town. I, I recognize many of you from my working with the town in prior years, and looking forward to serving again. Thanks for all your support.
Hi, I'm Travis Forbes, running for select board. Have a lot of background in constructions, all may be a good time. Thank you.
Thanks Travis. Anyone else? Is there a hand over here? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Meg Baker. I'm running for the trustee of the library board, the Ilse Library Board. And I'm running unopposed, but I appreciate all your support.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Farhad Khan. I have been on the select board for the past seven years now. I have a small business in town. I am up for reelection for a three year term on the select board, and I appreciate all your support tomorrow. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I'm gonna invite up the, uh, members of the Ilse Project team to come speak. While they're ac- coming up the stairs, I'm gonna take a minute to thank the rest of the JPs and volunteers who were working this evening. Dorothy Mammon, Jeff Byers, Pam Spatafora, Hudson Tilford, Diane Mott, Carolyn Kubler, I hope I said that right, and Brian Bauer. Really appreciate everyone who, um, volunteers for the town clerk and the JPs. Thank you. And we have Dana Hart is gonna make our first presentation. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for sticking around to hear about the library project. We're gonna have some wonderful slides in just a second. I'll just get started by saying we will have an informational meeting, um, just about this project on April 15th, right back here, 7:00 PM, uh, at the high school. So, um, tonight, I'm gonna try and keep it pretty short. It'll just be an overview, uh, and certainly, if you're interested, we would love it if you came back to our, our informational meeting in about a month.
And while we're waiting to get things set up, um, my name is Joe McVey. I'm a trustee and treasurer of the Ilse Public Library Board of Trustees and Chair of the Ilse 100 Project Team. We've had a lot of people doing a lot of work on this for us over the years, and so I would just like to ask the library trustees and also the members of the Ilse 100 Project Team, if you would just stand for a moment so we could thank you for your work. Don't be shy, those of you who are here. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Here we go. So like I said, we're gonna keep it short. I'll talk about, um, why we need the project, how we got here, uh, what our plan is, and then Joe will talk a little bit about, uh, what it's gonna cost and how we propose paying for it. The Ilse Public Library, and I'm sure many of you have been there, is an incredibly well-used resource. It's one of the busiest libraries in the state. We have a lot of things going for us, a great staff, um, a fantastic circulating collection, phenomenal programs. We are held back by our building though. Unfortunately, we have a lot of facilities issues. This won't be, most of you have probably heard something about this. Part of it is just that our, our facilities are really aging. So a third of our building is 100 years old. Our mechanical systems are struggling, um, our heating system is at the end of its life, our elevator has challenges, uh, leaks in the, the basement and the ceiling. So, we just need to fix a lot of things that aren't working. And, you know, that, there are costs to that, um, every year. We had about a little over 50, um, service calls last year. The other way to, to sort of look at the challenges we have with the building is from the, the layout and the design. We have, we are not ADA accessible, the building is not very flexible, so we can't adapt to, to current library needs. We're trying to run a 21st century library out of a building that was designed for the library of 1924, essentially. So, the community has been grappling with these challenges, these facility issues for quite a while. Way back in 2007 is really when we, this project initiated and got started. The community has been involved at every single step. Each iteration of the, the group working on this project has sought community feedback and input. And so I wanna thank everyone that's here tonight that has participated in this project at some point over the past decade plus. When you see the, the schematic designs and the renderings, I hope you see, um, some of your own feedback and input, uh, in, in the finished product, because it really has been accumulation of a, or accumulative effort, um, with everyone's feedback. So thank you, thank you to everyone. The Ilse 100 Project Team is the group that has been working on this project most recently, going into our third year working together now. I wanna assure everyone that this process has not been rushed. It's been methodical and deliberate. This group has really taken its time and been thoughtful. Again, seeking community input, seeking input from, um, from experts in, in various different fields. They started their process determining the library's space needs. They considered several different scopes of work and, um, got professional estimates on what each scope might cost. They conducted a conceptual design competition, and they ultimately recommended moving forward with Rearch Company and Women Lampir Architects for schematic design and, um, cost estimating. And so that's where we are now. We, uh, we have schematic designs, they're fantastic. We have a whole bunch of renderings, which are really exciting to see. We're not gonna present all of them tonight, because I know you've all been here for quite a while already. But I'll show just a couple and, and talk about, uh, a few highlights. This here is, of course, the view from Main Street. You can see the original 1924 building will be preserved. And to, oh, there's a laser pointer on this, right Kathleen? Is it the, the one button? Okay. So that would be, um, the, the front face, the Main Street facing part of the addition. There will be a new Main Street entrance, which will be universally accessible, handicapped accessible. All of the entrances in this new building will be accessible. I'll point out, uh, on this slide, that historic preservation has also been, the Vermont Department of Historic Preservation has been really involved in this process as well. They have reviewed these plans and spoken with the architects and kind of given their stamp of approval to the proposal. We've also had, um, an advisory panel of local architects that have weighed in on this and, and spoken with the architects doing the design work. So just to get everyone oriented to the, the highest level of the planning here, um, we've got Main Street down here. This right here, the original 1924 building, that is staying, that will be restored. The current building is made up of the original 1924 building as well as, um, the 1977 addition, which is right here. That's the space that faces the town offices. And then the 1988 addition, which is sort of between, the part of the building that faces the marquee cinema. So the two additions will come down. Every architect that has looked at this project has recommended taking them down. It'll be more cost effective than trying to, to repurpose them. This dark outline is the perimeter of what will be the new library building. It looks really big from this angle, and that's because we're going from three stories, well, four stories actually, to two. Two stories is what we have the staffing for. We, we don't have staffing for four floors. So you can think of it as kind of spreading out, that's why it looks so, so large from this bird's eye view. In reality, we are increasing our space by about a third, so adding about 8,000 square feet. There are gonna be many, many new, uh, spaces in this library. There'll be a new library activities room, a new space for teens, a, a high school space and a middle school space, conference room, um, lots of new spaces. Please come to one of our upcoming meetings or, um, take a look at the, the posters we have, uh, in the hallway, if you wanna see the renderings and, and get a better idea of the new spaces. So before I turn it over to Joe, I'll end with this second rendering, which is a view of the, um, the proposed addition from the back parking lot. Down here, you can see this would be our, our primary entrance. Most of our traffic already comes in through the back parking lot, so we're, we're kind of reorienting the building to, to accommodate that reality. So these, these, uh, graphic folks down here are entering the, the, um, primary entrance. To their right, on the first floor, this is, um, looking into the children's room. This plan doubles the space for youth services, and it gets the kids up out of the basement, which we're so excited about. This, of course, is the original building. And then this right here is, um, what we're calling our outdoor programming space. That's a second floor, um, roof garden essentially. We use our current garden, um, for programming currently, and we're gonna lose that because we're maximizing the, the footprint. And so this will allow us to continue to hold outdoor programming, and will also just be a really wonderful space for community members to have a coffee, read a book, be outside. It's nice and big, it's protected on three sides from the elements. We think we'll get a lot of use out of it. And I'm just realizing, I forgot to mention, we will not lose parking. I will preempt that question. The parking, this dotted line right here is where the parking currently starts, so we are gonna be building out into the upper lot, but we are gonna be able to just reangle that parking, that upper parking lot by building a short little retaining wall, so we will not be losing parking. Okay, now I will turn it over, uh, to Joe McVey, our chair, so he can talk about, uh, cost estimates and our funding plan. Thank you.
And, uh, thank you Dana. And Dana, also, the, the, um, you know how if you go to a meeting in the library, as many of you do, and you go in the evening and you go down that dark ramp past the trashcans and hope to get in the back? So we're gonna have the, the entrance to the, uh, community meeting rooms right here, it's at ground level, you can go in in a wheelchair, it'll be nicely lit, you'll go in the door right to the community meeting room. So, uh, how much is this going to cost? And how will we pay for it? Well, the, um, the professional estimators on our design team of Rearch and Women Lampir have looked very carefully at the costs and done everything possible to keep them reasonable while still getting us to a facility, uh, that'll be of good quality. So the top figure of about 14.4 million dollars represents the cost of materials, labor, site work, selective demolition and removal, as well as the work of the architects, a variety of engineers, construction managers, and so on. Well, they can realistically only estimate based on current costs, and we have to anticipate that costs will increase between now and when we wanna break ground in the spring of next year. So the estimators have looked carefully at current trends and anticipate an increase in cost of about 7%, which is represented here. Of course, inflation might back off, it might not be that much, but we do need to, to factor that in. Well, why would we wanna begin construction a year from now, uh, instead of starting in the fall? Two main reasons. We anticipate that we will pay for this project in part with state and federal grants and a capital fundraising campaign. And while we are optimistic about those efforts, we don't wanna commit to beginning construction until we have assurance that we have those monies in hand or, or practically. Secondly, we're told that construction of major projects like this are typically put out to bid at the beginning of the calendar year. So if this project were to go out to bid over the summer, uh, many of the highly qualified subcontractors won't be available because they'll already be engaged in projects that they're finishing up. And we might also point out that, uh, no one wants to be casting concrete and putting up the exterior of a building in Vermont in December. If, uh, construction begins in April, the outer shell of the building will be complete and work can be done on the interior during the winter months. So in addition to the costs of construction, there are owner costs, um, that we need to bear, and these include costs for items such as furniture, fixtures and equipment, utility fees, insurance, a surprisingly expensive fire safety permit from the state, and the costs of moving everything out of the library at the beginning of construction and then moving everything back to the new library. So, the total project budget is almost 17 million dollars. By making use of a geothermal HVAC system, we'll receive a half million dollar rebate from the federal government when construction is complete, and that brings our total project cost down to about 16 and a half million dollars. So what is the, what is the total amount of the cost of the project? This is a quiz. Sorry, my teacher hat. Right? So the total, the total amount is actually this 16 million 995 figure here. That's gonna be important in just a minute. So, uh, how are we going to pay for it? Uh, we're currently in the silent campaign, silent phase of our capital campaign to raise 6 million dollars. We hope to receive 2 million dollars in state and federal grants and 55,000 dollars in private foundation grants. And thanks to some creative thinking in the community, uh, by the select board and board chair and from our, uh, town manager, the select board is looking at making use of a portion of our 1% local option tax each year for this project, which over the course of time would contribute 4 million dollars. And you heard a little bit about the local option tax earlier and the, the surplus that's being generated there. So that leaves the remainder of the cost that we would need to borrow for in a municipal bond, and that amount would be less than 4.5 million dollars. And you'll notice the bottom here, that the tax impact of a 20-year bond for 4 and a half million dollars would equal 39 dollars per 100,000 dollars of assessed property value annually. So the tax, uh, that I think is a good number to, to think about. A- as a reminder, the town is required to bond for or to guarantee the full amount of the project, even though we have extensive revenue streams from other sources. So, while the exact wording of, is yet to be finalized, we anticipate that at the special bond vote on May 7th, residents of Middlebury would be asked to vote on two items. Uh, one, to authorize the town to make use of funds from the proceeds of the local option tax, sometimes known as the cross street bridge fund, to offset costs of the library project. And secondly, to authorize the town to borrow up to, how much? About 17 million dollars. So we would be authorizing the town to borrow up to that amount, because we have to guarantee the whole amount. But how much would they actually probably be borrowing? About 4.5 million dollars. So that's a, that's kind of a tricky concept, I think, to get across, and we're relying on you, the people who are here at this meeting tonight, to explain it to your, uh, fellow, fellow residents. So, um, and remember as well that the, um, the tax impact is based on the assessed value of your property. For many of us have seen the va- the actual value of our property increase quite dramatically over the past few years, but unless you have bought your property in the last five years or had major work, you know, the assessed value is that from the 2019 townwide assessment. So how will the library maintain its services during construction? We have a temporary location in an extremely generous gesture. The National Bank of Middlebury has offered us rent-free use of the ground floor of the DuKlos Building here. Uh, and we'll be able to maintain our core services, a portion of our circulating collection, interlibrary loan, a wifi, public computing, and limited in-person programming. We're gonna need to put most of our 50,000 print materials in our collection in storage. And our ideal would be to find a suitable location somewhere nearby where we could set up the shelving there, and then if a patron came into the DuKlos Building and wanted a book, a librarian could retrieve it from the storage location and get it to them in a day or two. We are still looking for such a location, so if you have any possible leads, Dana would love to hear from you. If we can't find a location like that, we'll need to box up the books and put them in storage. So we will also maintain and possibly even expand services at the Sarah Partridge Branch Library on Main Street in East Middlebury. So, what does the timeline look like? Tomorrow at the polls, we'll have our design display and some more information. We would love to answer your questions there. Uh, on April 15th, here at the high school, we'll have, uh, informational meeting about the design. We know that many people have strong feelings about that. The night before the May 7th bond vote, at, on Monday, May 6th, we'll have an informational meeting. That meeting will be primarily about the finances and the bond, uh, itself. Throughout 2024, we'll be continuing to seek to raise money through our capital campaign, and our partners i- on the design side will be working on creating construction documents. Early in 2025, the project will go out to bid. Uh, the library would move to a new location in February, uh, of next year. Construction would start in April, and if all goes smoothly, we would hope to move into a completed library in the summer of 2024. a completed library in the summer of 2026. The current schedule for construction is 56 weeks. Seems pretty fast to me, so we want to give them a little extra time just in case that doesn't, doesn't happen. So key dates for you. Tomorrow at the polls, Dana and I and members of the Ilse 100 Project Team and the library trustees will, will be staffing an information booth. We'd love to talk with you there. Project information meeting, April 15th. Bond information meeting on May 6th. Now, the bond vote, which will be on Tuesday, May 7th, sorry, this is from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, will be held where? Town offices. Okay, you know, sometimes our elections are in the rec center. These will be in the town offices. So on your way out, we'd invite you to pick up some information on a table in the hallway. And I would invite the members of the project team and the trustees to check in with me very briefly if you haven't signed up for a time slot at the polls tomorrow. We, it's been a long evening. We don't want to, we're interested in your questions, but we don't want to prolong the meeting, so please feel free to ask us afterwards or tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana and Joe. And next up, we have the delightful Laura Sermley.
Guess what? We know that the library is a resource connector and it has its own website, and so is the town of Middlebury, which has a brand-new website. So I just want to make sure that you know that. It's been, it's been totally revised and it's better than ever, and it is a resource connector, too. It will connect you to all the select board agendas and meeting minutes, all your town committees, commissions, and agencies-related town resources. So make sure that you don't miss that, and it's also a place where you can go to sign up to be on the town listserv. How many of you are on our town listserv? So if you're not on the town listserv, you can get on it, and that is really a good way to stay informed, as well as our wonderful Addison Independent. So you can see from the slide, the path for signing up. So make sure that you do that, and you can also now sign up for text messages. So that's brand-new and available. So you see here, TextMyGov. So how many of you signed up for TextMyGov? All right. And, and you can see how advantageous that is, especially given all the projects we've been talking about tonight, so be notified of interruptions of service. So, so just a quick note to let you know that, there's no town poll this year. We often do that, and the purpose of the town poll is really to point you to all of the resources that the town provides and to invite you to join our committees, of which we have many committees and commissions. So, so please still consider joining one of our committees. You'll hear about opportunities pretty soon. Usually, they're notified in the next couple of months, March, April, so, so we hope that you'll consider that. So that's just a quick note about our new website and a way to stay informed and connected with us.
Thank you, Laura. Is there any other business to bring before the town this evening? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Farhat, is there a second? Second, your name? Thank you. All in favor? Middlebury's town meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.